Well, don't everybody get quiet just because you know I'm here.
I know, I know, that's right, that's right. Are you driving, Councilman Batte?
Well, I'm certainly not.
Nice, nice.
But I have, I have, I have a pilot and co, I mean a co-pilot navigator that's handling all the logistics. I'll just watch your traffic.
Yeah, I wasn't going to ask you anything about that because as your lawyer, you do have a right against self-incrimination.
Okay, let's, let's go ahead and get started, people. Well, I want to welcome everyone who is...
This conference will now be recorded.
Want to welcome everyone who is listening in tonight. Today is Tuesday, May the 19th, 2020. Time is now 6:00 PM. The regular meeting of the City Council, the City of Trinidad, will now come to order. Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? Mr. Williamson, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I'd really like to...
Do this right, otherwise it's too late. The public will understand. One nation under God, in the desert, in the desert, so... Could we get a roll call, please?
Here.
Here.
Hello?
Here. Here.
Here. Here.
Here. You, you might want to turn your volume up a little bit, we can hardly hear you. Item two, approval of the agenda. Are there any changes that Council wants to make to the agenda? If not, it'll entertain a motion.
Don't move.
Second? Call the vote, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes. Item three, policy items and staff reports. Three A, first quarter 2020 financial report. Cheryl, I believe you're on, you want to try to guide us through that?
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hang on, I gotta remember how to do this. Okay, honor. That's interesting. Alrighty, can everybody see the screen?
I can.
Good evening, Council. We're here to discuss March 31st, 2020 quarterly financials. This is our first quarter. Um, you should have received this on the drive. I'm not sure if any of you printed it, so if you can follow along with the printed copy, it might be a little easier, won't get you too busy. Um, but what we're going to do is go through, um, the revenue for general funds first. The blue highlighted column is the column that we're taking a peek at. That's going to be our March 31st figures. And as you can see, through March 31st, we've collected in property taxes $3,071,000. Um, that's in comparison to $2,008,000 last, um, last year at this time. You must recall that 30% of the marijuana revenue actually shouldn't be in this figure because it's supposed to be moved to reserves. By work due to COVID-19, that's not something we were able to do this year. Um, the 30% that would be going if it was a regular normal year would be $256,000 moved to reserve. There are some significant decreases in revenues. For example, anything in the variance column that's in red, that's something that's been under-collected. Uh, if, if you'll just let me go through this, we can go, uh, I will see if there are any questions again, just because I know it's hard to interrupt and everybody gets off sync. So we'll ask questions at the end, so please jot them down as we go through. Inter-governmental, inter-governmental revenue is under-collected by $41,000 at this time. Um, I believe that's relative to grants that we are expected to receive. $100,000 was for the study for the Fisher's Peak Market Study, or I can't remember the exact name. Uh, of course, that's been turned into the 2020 budget, so it's going to skew it somewhat, looking like we haven't collected any of that money, which we haven't, because we started that grant. But if we were to take that away, we would, sorry about that. Um, anyway, that's just skewing this somewhat. If you compare it to last year, we collected $85,000 at this time versus 73. So we're almost where we need to be. It's just those grants that are kind of taking over that we've collected any revenue on. The charges for services are somewhat surprising, we're under-collected by $164,000. Again, this time last year, we were under-collected by $139,000. A lot of those fees come through in the surf in summer. Those fees are attributed to development fees, um, um, building, I can't remember the number or the name, sorry. But those are, I don't know, billing clarity. Those will be coming in and those numbers generate a little bit more, um, revenue again in the middle of the summer. Also, we have not, but there are reasons that it is under-collected, and that would be money we did not bill for in January and half of March for school district security. Also, we have not received, um, the agreed amount for contract services for TSJC security, and we are researching that because I believe that contract should be carried through May 2020. Uh, even though COVID struck, we still should have collected the January and March revenues for that, so we're looking into that. Anyway, those amount to about $20,000. Um, if we move on, everything else, there are smaller revenues, but they're pretty much where they need to be. Overall, the revenue we have collected to date, 3.4 million, which is $279,000 higher than what was budgeted. Again, marijuana money collected, $853,000, but $271,000 of that should be moved to reserves. So actually, we're kind of right where we need to be. And where are we? Um, again, we did not move that $270,000 or $256,000 because we're going to discuss that, I know, next work session. I believe Mike's going to schedule that so we can figure out where Council wants to go with the money that was collected above and beyond the $500,000 that was set aside for the COVID-19 leap. If, if we were looking at this and COVID-19 hadn't struck, we'd be right where we need to be. Just taking a look at it, we're 2.78% above, um, what was anticipated. And this, uh, last year, we were at 2.12% above what was anticipated. So, so far, we're really not seeing the COVID, um, um, the COVID results. However, we know that next quarter, that's most likely not going to be true. Are there any...
I just had a comment, speaking with some of the marijuana industry, some of the businesses have actually been up 15 to 18% above normal revenue. Now, that's not all of them, but just some of them, so that's encouraging as far as, um, our forecasted amount of money that we're looking at for losses in the second quarter. I know they're going to be higher than the first.
You know, I've been taking a ride up and down, I've been taking a ride up and down the streets for the last week, a few times, and they have been, they've been pretty, pretty busy. And that's where Mr. Goodall is referring to, uh, they've been pretty active. Go on, Cheryl.
All right. So now we're going to move on to the general fund expenses. Again, I, in the, in this column, I listed March's expenses from last year, so we can kind of compare and contrast to those. Um, you'll see that, yes, we did pull back on our expenses in some of our departments because COVID struck. Um, year-to-date, in our general government, we've expended $920,000 versus $1 million last March. Um, and if we just go through the rest of the departments, you'll kind of see how we scaled back somewhat, which is very promising. Our staff has done a good job pulling back on those expenses. Um, overall, our expenditures are 2.8 million, which is $555,000 less than what should be expended by this time. And, um, it is also less than last year, 2.9 million at this time last year. Are there any questions regarding, um, expenses?
You know, I just...
Go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry, Cheryl, this is Karen. On facilities maintenance, how come that's so far out of budget? Am I reading that right, that we're over by, we're under budgeted by $91,000? Are we over?
We, we are over expended by $56,000.
Okay. Is there, was there an emergency or something?
No, typically, at the beginning of the year, all of the departments purchase their janitorial supplies. Um, that has a lot to attribute to that, and if you look at last year, at that time, we were at $112,000. So, but that has kind of a lot to do with it. That will scale back and kind of level, or level itself out throughout the year. It should.
Okay.
Thinking with agency, yes, agency support also. We, um, pay out all of the agency support budgeted by Council in the first month of the year. So again, we, we just write out all those checks, and that looks very skewed, but again, it'll level itself out through the rest of the year.
Okay.
Are there any other questions?
Cheryl, this is Erin O'Leary. Does this show or indicate anywhere on here the total that we've expended for rent support and utility support? Or is that somewhere else in your, in your report?
Well, actually, that would be indicated in the 5% marijuana revenue project, however, none of those payments went out until April.
Okay. So we won't see that in the quarter.
All right, thank you.
Cheryl, this is Phil. Something that you might want to maybe get out to Council through Mike or Audra. Uh, if you can have a running tab, just send us an email on those, even though they're not going to come out until next, this next quarter. Just so that we have an idea how much has been expended of that $500,000 that we have, uh, put out there.
Yes, we, we can do that, and I was imagining that we would present that when we discuss the remaining quarters availability at the next work session.
Okay, that'll work fine. That'll work.
Okay, is there no further questions? We'll move on to power and light. Again, I have added marches from last year, so we could have some comparisons. But we are interested in the column that's highlighted blue. Um, at, through March 31st, we've collected $1.9 million in power and light, and we're 63% under-collected. This time last year, we have collected $2.1 million, so we're, we're, we were under-collected at that time, too. Uh, we may have adjusted, let me see. Sorry about that. That's interesting. I'm not exactly sure why we were so under-collected last quarter versus this quarter. I will take a look at that and research. It didn't catch my eye, honestly, because what actually caught my eye is that we were, um, revenues were over expenditures last March by $73,000 versus being under by $68,000 this year. So that's a little bit of a concern. I, I can't figure out what happened with the revenue and why they're not lining out, but, uh, you can, I will research that and get back to you. Are there any questions since regarding this? We did scale back somewhat on power and light, but again, like this, this didn't happen till March 20th, so, you know, most of our expenditures were getting set up and sent out before we pulled back. Um, other than that, we are $12,000 under-expended, which is, um, that's pretty good versus last quarter where we were $30,000, $33,000 over expended.
Uh, under the revenue portion of that, uh, the charges for services, and of course, there's a $56, $56,000 deficit there. Uh, is that partially due to maybe, uh, collections that are outstanding?
No, actually, collections are not, you won't see collections here because once the utility is used, it's billed and the revenue is expensed, it is, um, recognized. We, the accounts receivable, we actually haven't gone through, we need to, okay, let me start over. The accounts receivable, we're going to start monitoring back through April to see where we were last April. Again, once the utility is utilized, it's automatically recognized as revenue. So, no, that is not what's represented here.
Okay.
The, if we haven't collected it, it wouldn't be recognized here.
Okay. Go ahead, continue.
So we'll move on to the water fund. Um, our, the water fund is $35,000 under-collected at this time. Again, this is seasonal utility, and it's typical at this time of year for us to be under-collected. Uh, we start to recognize, recognize those revenues in the second and third quarter. Uh, however, due to potential water restrictions, it, it could be possible that we don't collect that revenue. Um, if we take a look at, oh, this was one figure I wanted you to all note it. In 2019, the marijuana collection, or cultivation fees came in at $537, or $534, and that's an audit figure. So that's quite an increase over previous years, but that's last year, so. Anyway, uh, the remaining revenues are under-collected by $383,000, but those are grant-related. As we expend on the grant projects, we will collect those monies, and so they should hopefully catch themselves up, especially if we finish those projects within, by the end of the year. Regarding expenditures, we are $250,000 under-expended, which is a good thing. Again, Mike had his guys pull back on the spending, and so they, they've cut back quite a bit, and they're waiting for the go to make those meter purchases that they may or may not need. But they pulled back in there getting permission from Mike for every single expenditure greater than $5,000. And then finally, revenues over expenses were $118,000 short, but as compared to last year, we were $176,000 short. So due to the under-expenses, that's kind of brought us up in our balance somewhat. However, again, the water fund is seasonal, and we will, the charges for services will be recognized in the next two quarters. And if there are no questions, we can move on to the gas fund. Um, gas fund, again, seasonal, again, we collect all of our revenue in the first quarter of 2020 because of the colder temperatures. You'll see that we are over-collected by $587,000. Um, that will take, will taper itself out through, as we go through the next two quarters because of the warmer months. And we are over-expended by $190,000 in gas funds, also relative to the colder months, because we are making those gas purchases in January and in February. That will also level itself out toward the end of the year. And finally, very comparable to last year at this time, we're $453,000 revenues over expenses versus the $476,000 last year. And I just wanted to remind the rest that there will be a quiz at the end of this presentation. All right. So on to sewer. Um, again, this is seasonal, it's relative to water. Once the water, uh, charges for services increasing will, um, accompany with the sewer funds. We are $26,000 under-collected, but we should, that should start to take for itself out throughout the year. We are $10,000 over expended on sewer funds, um, but that was because of some unexpected infrastructure repair. Uh, I believe it was in March, and I believe it was on Commercial Street. Is that correct, Mike?
Major. What's that?
I, I, I was just saying that we had an unexpected repair.
Oh, that is correct.
Anyway, that's unanticipated and it wasn't budgeted, but that's the result of the over expenditure. Uh, revenues over expenditures, $46,000, um, and that should start to balance itself out throughout the rest of the year. There are no questions, we'll move on to landfill. So landfill, this is the first time it's going to be standing on its own. I was able to pull figures from the general fund landfill to have for comparison. Uh, this time last year, we had collected $77,000, and through this March, we have collected $96,000. I believe that's relative to the fee increase. I honestly don't know why and when, but that number has continued to increase over the past couple of years. Um, even so, it's $4,200 under-collected, we just have to see how it goes throughout the rest of the year. This one's a really hard one. This is, this particular fund is hard to tie down. And then on general expenses, we are over-collected by, excuse me, we are under-expended by $16,000. And that results in revenues over expenses of $14,000.
One of the things on that, on the, on the landfill, I brought it up, I think it was last meeting, that possibility in the talk to Mike, and he brought, well, we brought it up, that maybe start charging for, uh, you know, people that go out and dump trees and, and grass and that type of other stuff. And that might help bring that negative down a little bit going forward if we decide to adopt that. I'm not sure if we need to do a resolution on that, or if it's something that we could just do, so, but that will be discussed later.
Correct. It'll, it'll be in ordinance, Mayor, but, uh, that's, that's coming up.
All right, we'll move on to lottery. Um, you can see last March, we had collected $30,000 versus $20,000 this year. I would imagine that's COVID-related, I, I can't answer that, I don't, uh, will know in the next quarter.
Sounds like someone swept away in a tidal wave.
A little bit of Anthony.
Oh, my God!
Um, and then also, you can see in expenditures, we've scaled back as well due to COVID-19, trying to figure out how we're going to be working on parks maintenance and passing trials. Those expenditures do typically show up in the second quarter, but department heads are kind of just holding off, especially the swimming pool. They're not sure, you know, do we move forward, do not, but they have not made any expenditures, and that's kind of where we sit. This, this fund is definitely seasonal. Um, we are $11,000 over-collected, but again, that's because they haven't made very many expenses through, uh, through March.
Hey, Cheryl, the revenues that we get from the lottery fund, uh, how are those determined? Is it for the, for the amount that is our purchase, uh, from the area here? Or how, how do they determine how much money we get? Because I did hear that lottery purchases were down in the state, uh, so I don't know if that's probably a direct relation to the decrease or not.
Um, honestly, Mayor, I would have to imagine it's based on the regional, but I, I really haven't learned that much about the, that, that distribution. I can research that for you, and I can get back to you.
Okay. It'll work.
All righty. And then on to tourism. You can see, last March, we collected $61,000 and we're down to $47,000. We know that's going to carry forward through April, May, June, and who knows how long, so that's somewhat of a concern. Um, expenses, however, they are a little bit higher than they were last year, but there are several advertising agreements that they had set up, January and February. They were getting ready to go to push the year, so we, uh, we had a lot of those expenses hit the books before COVID happened. I do know that they are leading quickly, and they are making decisions on what they're scaling back on, but that's where we are at this time. We are $30,000, um, expenses over revenue.
I, I did attend the tourism meeting the other list last week, and, uh, they are looking at cutting some of their expenses that they're able, that they're able to. So we'll see if that'll level off at all or not.
Okay. And finally, we're on to capital. This really is incomparable to last quarter because capital isn't consistent. There's always different projects starting and moving and ending and, and that type of thing. But we can compare the sales tax. So you'll see that we are over-collected on sales tax, just as we discussed in the work session. Sales tax didn't suffer as much as we thought it would for the first quarter, but we're pretty positive it's going to take the hit and will be in the next quarter. Um, but we collected $536,000 last year versus the $489,000. And then if, if you wanted to peek at the projects, just let me know, that there's really nothing, no items of note here. We're just moving along with the projects, especially the grant-related projects as, um, as necessary, and that's kind of where we sit. Are there any questions?
Well, it was just good to see that it looks like staff is, you know, making the necessary cuts where, you know, where it's absolutely necessary. So you could see a decrease in our rev, in our, in our, on our expenditures, so that's good to see.
All righty. So I, again, I believe if we put the marijuana, um, allocation on the next work session, I will have those figures available for you of everything that's been dispersed to date. I know that we're still dispersing here and there, uh, but we will, I will have those figures available. Other than that, that's it.
Okay, thanks, Cheryl.
Thanks, Cheryl.
The, on to item, on to item 3B. The on to item, item three B, the AMI meter project update. Uh, Mike, is that you that has the information for us?
Mr. Mayor, um, I know that, uh, council had a question about, uh, the AMI project and an update, uh, from last, uh, big discussion we had, um. So COVID, uh, has pretty much shut the project down. They, they are doing, uh, data work that they can from, from their home. Um, JCI has actually, uh, furloughed most, uh, the whole, uh, nationwide company, um, have all been furloughed to three days a week is all they're working. So, um, with that being said, they're, they're anticipating starting up as soon as, as COVID, uh, allows. Part of the, the issue we're going to have is a lot of the installs for water meters and gas meters will require IRS to go into homes. We need to have our customers feel safe and comfortable to move forward with that. Um, the, uh, JCI has hired a new subcontractor and they are, uh, onboard with them and ready to, to move, move in as soon as, uh, it's feasible for them to come in and, uh, they're working on their protocols, uh, COVID-related on, uh, uh, just, uh, letting our customers feel comfortable with somebody coming into their home to install water meters, light their gas, uh, appliances, pilots and stuff, but, um, two, since the second week in March, uh, we had, uh, water meters, we had three thousand two hundred and eighty-eight installed. Um, there's, there's roughly forty-five hundred water meters, so we still have a ways to go there. If you recall, we were having a bit of a problem with the gas meter endpoints. Through this process, we have been able to narrow those down and work on those while, uh, through the three days per week where, you know, the techs don't have to go inside the homes, it just go to the gas meter. So we're getting that resolved, but we have, uh, thousand sixty-one of those installed. Um, the overall count of gas meters is about forty-two hundred, so we've, we've got a ways to go on that. Electric meters, uh, thirty-six hundred and twenty-three installed out of forty-six hundred or thereabouts, so, um, we have issued an RFP out for the installation of gas meters. That was a part of ATI's contract. Uh, we received one, uh, bid, it was extremely high. We have contacted the company to, uh, find out why and, um, see, you know, if we can negotiate that down. If not, uh, we will be going in a different direction where, um, city staff along with possibly some, uh, contract workers can do the installs, but, uh, we're, we're working through that. Uh, the gas meters have now been, uh, moved for receipt to June. Um, COVID-related, of course, factory shutdown, we had our order placed over a year ago and it just keeps moving on us, so, um, that's where we're at. Um, other than that, uh, that, that's, the project is kind of at its standstill, but what we are noticing is, uh, we're able to troubleshoot electric a lot, finding out, you know, high voltage, uh, power outages, some, uh, some meter tampering, and we've been able to see that within the day where, uh, before it could have been a month or two, not knowing that meters were pulled, so we're, we're working on that. Uh, gas meter endpoints, same thing, have tilt tamper on those and we've seen tilt tammers and we're able to go out and address the issue right away, right away. And then, uh, water, uh, we're fine tuning the water, it, it, we get a list of leaks, um, and with that list of leaks, we can tell that, um, sprinkler systems are getting turned on because it's noticing more water going through than normal. It kind of creates its own pattern and it, it understands, uh, it's a smart meter, so it figures out how much water is going through and averages it out. Once there's a spike, it says, hey, you better go check this, there's a possible leak. So, uh, we've been sorting that through that and, uh, with our water restrictions and no watering between ten and four, we're able to monitor that and the most part, uh, citizens are doing their, uh, that being said, uh, our hope is that Governor, uh, relaxes the, uh, takes the safer home to phase two or phase three and that way we can start, um, contacting people and scheduling them for meter changeouts, uh, where they have a comfort level of having an unknown, you know, tech in their house to, to change out their meter or light their pilot, so that's all I have there, Mayor.
Any questions, any questions for, uh, Mr. Valentine from council?
I have a question, I have a question, Mike.
Go ahead, Karen.
Who, who's the, what's the name of the new company that Johnson Controls hired? Do you know, or do we know yet?
Uh, we do, and I apologize, I don't have that in check, check, Mike. I think it's, Band Guard, I will get that information to you. It is, uh, a new, uh, subcontractor. I will get the information.
Just, yeah, just wanted to find out.
Sure.
Okay, if there are no other questions on, uh, the AMI meter project update, we'll go on to item four, petitions or communications are overwritten. I don't know if there is anybody missing in, in, uh, that, uh, what, that have, has a comment. Okay, uh, I'll go on to read a proclamation recognizing the class of 2020 graduates. This is from the Office of the Mayor of Trinidad, Colorado proclamation, recognizing the class of 2020 graduates, May twentieth, May, May of 2020. Where at is it? It is an unprecedented time in our world with the widespread impact of COVID nineteen, of COVID nineteen pandemic, where many daily activities that we once took for granted are now being profoundly missed. And whereas a social distancing order in our state precludes the ceremonious graduation traditions from being enjoyed, and whereas there are over two hundred and fifty local graduates of the class of 2020 from Trinidad High School, Holy Trinity Academy, Honi High School, Primero, Kim, Kim High School, Branton High School, Branton Online, Gold Academy, Aguilar High School, Faith Christian, and Trinidad State Junior College. And whereas much dedication and hard work has been invested by, by each and every one of these graduates to attain the educational requirements that earn their respective distinguished diploma and degrees. And whereas US graduates will make up the workforce of tomorrow and an ed, and an educated workforce is essential to the economic success of our community and country. And whereas regardless of the platform by which celebration for this accomplishment is had, these graduates are applauded for their work and encouraged to follow their dreams. Now therefore, I Philip T. Rico, Mayor of the City of Trinidad, Colorado, on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby recognize the class of 2020 graduates. In the city of Trinidad, and ask that the residents of this community join me in honoring and celebrating the graduates of our community, recognizing with much pride their achievements and accomplishments. In witness whereof, I have here and to set my hand and cause the seal of this city to be affixed. Mayor Philip T. Rico, date, May the nineteenth, twenty, uh, May the nineteenth, twenty twenty. And, uh, on a personal note, I just wanted to congratulate, uh, all of the graduates. Like the proclamation said, it's an unprecedented time. And, uh, you know, I was talking to my wife a couple of days ago and when, uh, students enter the ninth grade, they look forward to a graduation date and being able to be together with their fellow students. And it's unfortunate that, uh, they're not able to assemble like, uh, we all have in our past years, uh, but I do hope that, uh, they will take this time to recognize that this is an unprecedented time. They do have a very promising future ahead of us, even though at this point in time it seems very difficult to recognize, uh, but I do believe that the future holds promise for all these graduates that have worked so hard, uh, for the past twelve years. Congratulations again. Uh, does anyone on council have anything they would like to comment? Go ahead, go ahead Rusty.
I just wanted to acknowledge TSJC, I think that they've extended a program out to all the graduates for some sort of classes at no cost, if I remember right. And I just wonder, I can ask DSJC for their efforts, uh, to the seniors who have graduated.
Right, okay.
Uh, 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 Mayor?
Yes.
This is Rhonda, Rhonda Epper on the line, and I, I apologize, I missed my opportunity to comment, I was trying to get myself up here, but I did want to thank city council very much for this proclamation as well as the letter you provided to our graduates. It means so much to all of us, especially to our graduates. Um, as you mentioned, it's not the celebration, uh, that they're hoping for this year, but it, it means a lot to know that we have support from the city and we'll be sending this out in their graduation gift boxes to all of them. So again, um, my deepest thanks to you for, for the recognition.
And I want to thank you for, you know, the work that you're doing. I know it's a difficult time for you as, uh, the leader of the Trinidad State Junior College campus and, uh, but I, uh, you're doing a good job in, uh, what you're doing. So thanks again. Onto, uh, item five, consent agenda, approval, item five A, approval of the regular meeting minutes of May the fifth, twenty twenty, special meeting of, uh, minutes of May the eleventh, twenty twenty. Item B, approval of the bills for... One, I've got a wrong figure here somewhere. I'll have to bypass that one. But item C, approval of payroll of three hundred and forty thousand, seven hundred and twenty-one dollars and thirty-four cents. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second, second.
Call vote please. Karen?
Mayor, I'll call, get off.
Yes.
Diego? Yeah. Uh, Ogle Tree? Yes. Two?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Uh, Rico?
Yes.
Did I miss anybody?
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, on to item, uh, six, public carings, we have none. Item seven, unfinished business, we have none. Item eight, miscellaneous business. Item eight A, consideration of appointment of Tim Dalton to the Planning and Zoning Invariance Commission. Entertained a motion, please?
Someone will.
Second?
Second.
Okay, uh, any discussion on it? Uh, that, uh, we, we still will have one opening after this appointment here, uh, so we'll still have to go out and try to find one additional person to the, uh, Planning and Zoning Invariance Commission. Call vote please.
Get off?
Yes.
Diego? Yes. Hey?
Yes.
Ogle Tree?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Item eight B, consideration of appointment to, of Jana Remington to the Historic Preservation Commission. Entertained a motion?
So moved.
Okay. Any discussion? There again, we still, we still have one opening there after this, uh, appointment. Any discussion on that?
I was just going to say I'm acquainted with Mr. Remington and I'm very happy and excited that she's, um, stepped up and wants to be involved on that for, um, I've heard done it for a while, she'll be great.
Okay, good to know. There's another, if there's another discussion, call vote please.
Get off?
Yes.
Diego?
Yes.
Hey? I'll come back to Miss Hay. Ogle Tree?
Yes.
Two?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
And Miss Hay?
He must, he must be in a blind spot.
Yeah, he's in a valley.
I just want to say congratulations to both Tim Dalton and Jana Remington for, uh, applying for, uh, some of our commissions and, uh, we have some work for them to do. So again, congratulations. Onto item HC.
Thank you.
Onto item HC, first reading of an ordinance amending section two dash fifteen, dash five of chapter two, administration, article three. Council meeting rules and orders of business of the Trinidad Municipal Code to provide for electronic attendance of city council members and setting a hearing date for consideration of said ordinance to six PM on June the second, twenty twenty. Need someone to introduce?
I will.
Okay. Motion please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion. Les, do you want to kind of fill in with anything else that you have for this?
Absolutely, Mayor, and, and council members, this is, is you, what? We're reading, Mayor, this is the proposed electronic attendance policy. Obviously, this policy, um, contemplates a, uh, return to in-person live meetings of city council. This is, you know, but that, that is, uh, it would allow for council members, uh, who can't be physically present at a council meeting, to be able to attend by way of, uh, a platform such as this or, um, also to be able to phone you. And, um, um, I think otherwise, we want to speak for itself and I'm here to answer any questions that any council members may have.
Any questions, uh, from council?
You want to think, Les, when you wrote this up, uh, did we have a, uh, how many times you could use it? Did we get something stipulated into that?
Yes, sir, Councilman Chu, and I will tell you that it says in paragraph A, uh, paragraph two, I want to, two, paragraph two. It says the, the last part, two, uh, um, non-emergent electronic participation should be limited to no more than two consecutive meetings and no more than four proposed city council meetings per calendar year. And so that is the, the limitation of the number of times that this could be used. Is that what you meant, Councilman?
Well, kind of that, with exception of that, someone that might not be able, we may have to extend that to someone that had hers, anything like that. Is there something in there for that?
I'm sorry, next sentence, I, uh, I quit the word link. No, it says this limitation may be waived in the event of unforeseen circumstances at city council's sole discretion. I should have kept reading, I'm sorry.
That's fine, that answered my question, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Downs? Not called vote?
Diego?
Yes.
Diego?
Yeah.
Miss Hay?
Yes.
Ogle Tree?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Item AD, approve submission of a letter to the Joint Budget Commish, Committee regarding Senate Bill twenty dash zero zero three. That's in regards to the Fisher's Peak funding. Entertained a motion?
So moved.
Second? Okay, uh, Mike, do you want to go ahead and read that, uh, letter, please?
Sure, Mayor, um, so this letter is on...
Sure, Mayor. Um, so this letter is on City of Trinidad, letterhead and, uh, Los Angeles County, letterhead jointly. It's addressed to House Speaker Casey Becker, Senate President Leroy Garcia, Representative DeNia Escar, Representative Terry Will, Senator Dennis Hicey, Colorado State Capitol, two-hundred East Colfax Avenue, Denver, Colorado, eight oh-two oh-three. And this is in reference to Senate Bill twenty-dash-zero-zero-three, state parks funding enhancements. Dear Honorable House Speaker Becker, Senate President Garcia, Representatives Escar and Will, and Senator Hicey, Los Angeles County Commissioners and the City of Trinidad are aware of the unprecedented economic impact of the coronavirus pandemic on the entire state and the enormous task the Joint Budget Committee has undertaken since March fourth to balance the state budget while cutting over three-point-three billion from current programs. The impact of the program cuts will result in reduced levels of service provided to the citizens at the local level in areas such as mental health, education, and prevention services. Although funding for state park enhancements and development of the land for the newest state parks surrounding Fisher's Peak is in jeopardy, the county and city continue to request this general fund support to help jumpstart the economy of Southern Colorado and the city of Trinidad and Los Angeles County. The last recession in two thousand nine-dash-ten resulted in the shutdown of mines in Los Angeles County and the layoff of workers, which resulted in an exodus of people leaving the region. And it took several years for the city and county to recover. With the recent infusion of capital that has increased commercial activity and tourism, the city and county believe that opening the newest state park will stimulate the economy. Trinidad State Junior College is planning to initiate a trail building program that will be the first of its kind in the nation. And many of the classes will take place onsite at Fisher's Peak. This program represents up to twenty-one thousand tuition payments and is expected to generate around fifty thousand into the local economy through food, lodging, and other incidentals. If the opening is delayed, it will mean lost revenues for the college and community. This is critical due to the projected revenue losses that the city and county will be faced with in addressing budget shortfalls in calendar years twenty twenty and twenty tw- twenty-one. City of Trinidad is projecting a minimum revenue loss of twenty-two, to thirty percent in twenty twenty. That includes twenty-four percent reduction in sales tax revenue due to the closure of businesses and tourism, a thirty percent reduction in marijuana revenue and revenue reductions due to the closure of recreational facilities, municipal fees, et cetera. Los Angeles County is projecting a total shortfall of two-point-nine-five million dollars in twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one. That includes reduced revenues in the following areas, oil and gas, property taxes, planning, fairground rentals, HU T F, uh, energy impact funds, mail and lease rights, et cetera. In addition, drought conditions are affecting the southeastern part of Colorado, and the COVID-19 pandemic has affected the agricultural sector, which may force ranchers out of business. Therefore, we request that General Assembly consider approving any general fund investment the state's budget is able to bear to develop park infrastructure for Fisher's Peak State Park. That will help stimulate the long-term economy, economic recovery for the region and allow citizens to start enjoying the amenities the park and region offer. The City of Trinidad and Los Angeles County greatly appreciate your consideration. Uh, respectfully, and on the signature line is, uh, myself, the city manager, Phil Dorncamp as administrator, Mayor, and all council members, and Luis, uh, Commissioner, President, and other two commissioners.
Any, uh, any questions on the, uh, on the letter from council? Call a vote please. Go ahead. Okay, call a vote please.
Goodoff?
Yes.
Diego?
Yes.
McHae? McHae? Ogletree?
Yes.
Q?
Yes.
Williamsburg?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes, thank you.
A delayed vote is still a vote.
Okay, on to item eight D, or eight E, excuse me. Consideration of variance request from, uh, part of the Safer-at-Home Order, requirements and correspondent executive order. All entertained a motion?
So moved.
Second?